Two thousand and twenty-two to order, and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Here. This time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Yeah, yes, as amended.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to add Section Roman numeral nine, capital B, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions regarding the GMB request to adopt resolution.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward. That you state your name and then keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Gerald Olson, and my comment is just, a year ago, the water and sewer has raised 3%, and now they're looking at doing it again. Would be better to ask the citizens if they approve of this. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on May 2nd, two thousand and twenty-two, along with the minutes from the special meeting held on the same day.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to a community spotlight.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, I've asked our Development Director, John Wallace, who's also the Director of our Downtown Development Authority, to provide a slideshow, not a very long one, I promise, but a slideshow that he has given to the Cadillac Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class that provides a general overview of community development-related activities and programs and things that we work on. John, I thought, did a really nice job in presenting in a very concise way these slides to the Cadillac Chamber Leadership Class during their Government Day, when he and I talk all about operations of the city. I do a more general overview, and John boils things down into the community development side of things. And I just thought, especially as we look at a year ahead or a year behind, that this should be a good overview for council and really for the public to also hear in general. So, John, with that, why don't you step forward and take us through it?
Thank you, Marcus. The simplest way to describe what you do in community development is two words, the built environment. It's really everything on the landscape, whether it be private development, public development, transportation. It all in some way gets managed or directed through various timeframes in history to what happens in community development. And I've broken it down into three basic areas. The master plan, which guides the grand vision for the community. Public facilities, which is comprised of your transportation, public utilities, water, sewer, parks and open space. And finally, private land development, and how does that happen? And it happens through a series of development regulations, and I've kind of simplified it here. The principal one is through zoning, but also through building, the building code and the fire codes. And there's other police power ordinances and so forth, but just to give the basic idea of how you address community development across the board. And then, moving forward, I'll break down some examples of each of these three categories. Not too long ago, we adopted what was then a new master plan, and ironically, it's time to be starting work on that again. Basically, the master plan map shows how the land in the city is to be used, basically in three categories, residential, commercial, industrial. And then there's also different categories of commercial and different categories of residential. In our last master plan, we also added the concept of a mixed-use planned unit development, which is more of a customized zoning technique to work with the developer and come up with specific zoning regulations for how a specific project might be developed. In addition to the master plan, there's a number of specialty plans or subarea plans. We do have a DDA, TIF, and development plan for the city. It's what guides the expenditures for our Downtown Development Authority and all the tax increment revenues that come in through that district. The projects that we can spend that money on are identified in this plan. We have the Community Recreation Plan. It's usually prepared under separate cover, but it's usually part of the city master plan. Here is a plan that we've started working on probably two years ago. We'll probably take another look at it and work more closely with the hospital. It's a subarea plan, talking about how we can create a special entity for the hospital campus and maybe in a broader concept, a medical and general office park in that area of the city. So, it's something that we'll probably be working on in more detail in the coming year. Transportation, usually we'll be working on classifying street systems. I don't think there's a lot of new work to be done there, it's pretty much just done. Also, there's street classifications through the Act 51 Act, which breaks down all the city streets into local and major roads and so forth. So, that's always an important part because it relates directly back to how you might want to use the land within the city. One of the things that you do in the transportation study is to look at possibilities to make improvements. This is a very first attempt at some road connections that might be evaluated for adding into the transportation part of the master plan. We've not evaluated those yet. But one of the principal concepts in transportation is as much as possible as you want to connect a grid which provides for alternative routes. If there's any disruption in one particular street, it always helps if you have different options to go on different routes that are roughly similar to the ones that you're used to traveling. So, that'll be something that we'll be looking at going forward. Utilities, usually in utility plans, we're fortunate here, we're a relatively small city, and we fortunately have most of the city covered by water and sewer. If we didn't, usually this plan would also identify a priority extension of utilities for the community, but we don't need to deal with that. So, it probably would be more oriented to what key future infrastructure improvements would have to be made to the existing system. And of course, parks and open space, again, that's usually tied directly back to the recreation plan and identifies and classifies the parks as either community or neighborhood parks. And that plan gets implemented to establish parks within the normal range of what is recommended in terms of so many parks per unit of population. So, that's very much a part of the planning that we're doing in the recreation area. Getting into private land development, of course, the principal thing that we do to implement the master plan is to create the zoning ordinance. If you look at the districts and the zoning ordinance and the master plan, they should be almost identical. Sometimes, there's a little bit of change, but they should almost align perfectly, and that is the way that you implement the master plan from a land use perspective. With building and fire codes, very critical for the safety of the community. Of course, the city contracts with Associated Government Services to do all our building code reviews and some enforcement, and the city reviews and enforces its fire codes internally through staff positions. Very important thing, processes in addition to zoning to manage safety and just that things get built properly within the community. And then, just some examples of what happens as a result of doing planning and community development. We've been blessed to make a lot of progress in the last several years with a lot of public projects, and those public projects have led to a lot of private investment. I believe we've created about $32 million in the last five years in private investment, stemming from about a $5 million investment in the public infrastructure, and most of that was in the Cadillac Commons. One of the things that you do in looking at planning, too, is understand what your possibilities are for a community. Of course, Cadillac is fortunate to be landlocked in a sense. If you are a community on the waterfront, you can't draw from half your region because it's all water. We're blessed to be surrounded by eight communities that we could draw from in addition to our own population locally. I won't spend much time on this, but of course, the Cadillac Commons created five venues, which was the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion, City Park, the Plaza, the Market, and of course, the Trailhead, which is now under construction. That will complete the Cadillac Commons. And before the Commons was even completed, that started, jump-started the development of the Cadillac Lofts, mixed-use planned unit development. It led to the Cobb's Mitchell Building being restored and also the Long Road Distillers, which was just across the street from the Cobb's Mitchell Building. Just some of the pictures of the projects and what happens within those facilities. City Park has often been used for the focal point for our arts festivals and a number of different festivals that are held in the community. Here's a picture of the Craft Beer Festival. I think that's going to be resurrected again this year and be back on the table. Of course, a major renovation to the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. It wasn't the most suited for larger attendance with the various planters in the way of some of the prime seating for the events that were held there, and that was all turned around. And then, with the addition of the sound system and the movie screen, created a lot more potential for activities within the downtown. Taking a very auto-centric Plaza, which was devoted strictly to a central parking lot, we reclaimed a 60-foot-wide swath through that parking facility and added a lot of energy to the downtown through the splash pad, the fireplace, the ice rink, and the general Plaza space just to the west of the fireplace. Gives you more of a overall look at the whole project and how it relates to the lake. Kind of an exciting picture on the left, I always liked that picture. And then, of course, just a different view of the fireplace and the splash pad. The Market was the site formerly of an older office building, became considered obsolete, and so it was a prime target to reactivate that space into a much higher energy space publicly through the development of the Market. And here you see some wonderful pictures of major events going on. There's others, too, that I have of weddings and when we had the Consumers Energy Grant Program. It gets decked out real fancy in a number of different ways. And of course, this was an older concept. Of course, the new one, and this one, we toyed with the idea originally of having the clock tower in the back as kind of a community space. That idea changed, and it became the focal point or entry into the Trailhead Facility. Major turn of events, too, was when Michigan Community Capital came to the city and seeing all the progress that was being made through the Commons and some of the other private investment, was very interested in establishing one of the city's largest redevelopment projects, which was Cadillac Lofts. And we're coming in with kind of twin buildings. There was going to be 84 additional apartment units. I think with Phase Two now, there will be slightly more. So, you know, we'll be close to 100 units being added in the downtown through this project, as well as probably about, oh, 10,000 square feet of commercial space. And there's just the graphics of those facilities. The Cobb's Mitchell Building, it was in a state of pretty sad repair for a while. Maintenance was not being done. You can see it looks kind of bleak. A lot of the vegetation had been overgrown, and with the progress that was being made through the Commons and elsewhere, a developer from the Grand Rapids area got involved in this project and turned it totally around, and it turned out to look like this. The project received a Historic Preservation Award from the state, and so one of our principal historic, most significant historic buildings was restored in the city. We continue to do much the same thing that we've done in the past. We're working with the remaining historic preservation buildings. We're working with Nine and Ten News on the Northwood Building. We're having discussions now with the adjoining development, with Lisa Lundell from the pharmacy. We're also working with Lee Richards on the Speeds Project. And so, all the progress you've seen to date, we continue to work on those projects, and we're hoping that the MEDC comes through and can be a real player and help us, push us over the top of the mountain on this one so that we really have the downtown working, really going great guns into the future. We've many times assisted with graphic depictions of what buildings could be, and that's oftentimes led to inspiring different thoughts on the part of the developers. It's something we routinely do in the department, and that's really helped some of the folks sort of clarify their vision and see what might happen. With the Northwood, there's a particular problem. We were able to sit down and redesign the parking lot around there, and we're able to create an additional 11 parking spaces in there just by how we chose to eliminate some of the curb cuts and redesign the access. So, those are all elements of different parts of community development that come into play to activate buildings within the city.
Just a quick reference point, that would require council approval. It's just conceptual how to resolve that issue.
And then, finally, right down to the very small things, but, you know, the Shea Locomotive structure, this is how it looked before the leadership project that I was giving actually this presentation to. And then, of course, a night shot of the locomotive. And it really turned out nice, and we're seeing a lot more people photographing the train these days. And so, I think it really achieved what we hoped it would achieve. But that's kind of a quick synopsis of what we've been doing in the department and some of the basic activities that we do.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And I really wanted council to see this and hear this from John, and you know, if you could boil that down into its essence, the takeaways are, it starts with you guys. It starts with, you know, the overall view and vision of the City Council. Where are we? Where do we want to go? And is what we found, is we followed the recipe from the state about investing in ourselves, private investment actually then has followed, you know? Whether it's a direct correlation or coincidence or a combination thereof, you know, there's been tens of millions of dollars of private investment that has come as a part of the city, investing a mere fraction of that in redefining and redeveloping its own public spaces. And so, you know, it's a never-ending process, but we're very proud of what we have, and we're certainly very proud of all the efforts we continue to put in it. Couldn't do it without this partnership and collaboration.
Thank you. Mayor. Okay. All right, that takes us to a few public hearings that we have to have this evening.
So, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first set of public hearings are with regard to the water and sewer rates, or rather, I should say, the first presentation is going to be a singular presentation that covers both water and sewer rates. There will need to be two separate public hearings accordingly, first one for water, followed by sewer. The presentation that you're going to be given is going to be a retread of information and data that has been previously provided to City Council and the public. Nothing has changed in terms of what is being proposed. With that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Owen Roberts.
Thank you, Marcus. So, I want to be very brief, and I understand this is one of those challenging discussions, but first of all, we're here because, I think, two important reasons. Number one, the Charter requires it. The Charter says that "The rates and charges of any municipal public utility for the furnishing of public utility services shall be so fixed as to at least meet all the costs of such utilities." And then, I think reason two is just it's prudent management to make sure that if you're charging a user charge, that you take a look at those actual costs of the system, review those annually, and make sure that you have sufficient rates to cover your core responsibilities of providing safe water to the community and a safe place for the sewer to go to be treated and then discharged. So, that's why we're here. It's a critical responsibility maintaining that infrastructure, providing the funds for the debt service that is part of the system as well. The other thing, we really want to avoid the issues that come with lack of maintenance, and I think that's an important component as well. Health and safety issues associated with a poorly maintained system are certainly things that we want to avoid. And then, also, the devastating hit to a community's reputation that could come when there's a severe calamity in the system. So, balancing all those things, the recommendation then, having said that, is to increase both the water and the sewer rates for fiscal year '23, the period that starts July 1st of this year, by 3%. That calculates out to about $1.53 per month for the average user. Residential user in the community uses about seven units in a normal month, and so that would increase those rates by about $1.53 per month, or $18.36 per year. So, certainly, I think the justifications are pretty clear when you think about what we've had to do with the new well field and complete relocation of our entire base of water operations, and then just the ongoing capital investment and the operating costs that are a part of the system. So, we really are convinced, based on this analysis, that this is the lowest rate adjustment that should be considered to meet these core responsibilities that we partner together to fulfill. And to consider lower rate changes or adjustments really could jeopardize the ongoing integrity and performance of the system. So, we're really trying to work against that clearly. To put it, to give you some just contextual information, this chart presents the changes to water rates over the last 15 years, and so you can see four out of the prior 10 years were a 0% back in 2011 and '12, is when we did Phase One of the well field. And then, as we geared up here over the last five years or so for Phase Two of the well field and started to get a feel for the actual cost of that project, those changes were a little higher, and all those changes really were affirmed by professional independent rate reviews as well that were part of that debt process. And we'll show you that in just a minute. I think another important piece of contextual information as we try and frame this discussion is how the rates compare to peers that are kind of in our general geographic area. So, about a year ago, Gosling Zubek Engineering Sciences released their 2021 version of their rate comparison study. This is for the northern lower peninsula and the eastern upper peninsula. In that survey, there were 47 water systems that responded and 48 sewer systems that responded, and you can see that the city was well below the halfway mark even in those rate studies. So, really, as it filtered through, the typical combined just water and sewer bill from the survey was $73.75 per month, and using the same level of usage across the board for the comparisons, Cadillacs calculated out to be $44.72, which is about 39% below the average bill that was a part of the study. So, I think that's also an important piece of context that we can talk about. Here are the results of the two independent firms that had reviewed the revenues and expenses in the system. The timing differences just are when the Baker-Tilly Study was done first as part of our Water Asset Management Plan, and that anticipated that project coming to fruition a year or so earlier. But you can see the charts are pretty similar if you kind of align when the actual project would have been expected to start. So, we're in the later years of that now. The Baker-Tilly Study did indicate the need for a systematic 3% increase moving forward, and that's exactly the level that we're presenting to you. So, again, those are a couple of years old at this point, but still very relevant as we move through the project, and we do plan to update those as we move through the next fiscal year. That's basically the information that I wanted to present tonight. Wanted to show just this final chart on behalf of the public to show that we had several public meetings where the budget was discussed, the water and sewer operating budgets, capital budgets, and rate recommendations were a part of all of those discussions. So, there's been several opportunities to do that, kind of culminating here tonight with a recommendation to adopt those ordinances. So, we'll have the public hearing, I think, and then I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comment as it relates to the adjusted water rates.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Randy. Just one quick question here. I don't, Owen, when he just mentioned the combined sewer and water at $1.53, was that? I know you probably can't answer this, but just to get it straight, was that for both the water and sewer, the $1.53, or is that just for the water? Or is that the sewer and water combined to the citizens of Cadillac? I didn't.
It was combined.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so that's a, you know, thank you, Owen, appreciate that. Mr. Roberts. One moment, please. Do I have six minutes to talk, or do I have three minutes?
You have six minutes.
Okay. One moment.
About that.
Let me get on my soapbox. Let me get on my soapbox and...
But the comments have to be about...
Directly, yes, yes, Mayor Felkins. And I also just, I would like to thank the city for repairing Howard and acting on it quickly on the sewer that was going to break loose real bad on Howard and Cedar. Let's see, do I got time for six minutes?
Thank you.
Are these general public comments or just strictly on a particular subject?
Just on the water rates?
Just on the rates, you'll be talking about the work on Simon Street later? Thank you.
And then there'll be another general public comment session at the end.
Right, when we, just to clarify, when we talk about Simon Street, you'll be able to comment at the end of the meeting in our second public comment. Three minutes.
If you need more, just come back the next time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one little comment. Our water department's doing a great job with our water. We shouldn't be compared to other ones who are charging more to do it. What our people are doing better at. That's all I have.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion amongst the council or entertain a motion.
Owen, we compared 47 other towns?
Gosling Zubek had 47 respondents, yep.
How many towns are there in the state of Michigan?
Oh, there's 12, 1,200 cities, village, townships.
We came up with 1,400.
1,400, okay.
So, okay, this is, you got a little petite amount there.
Yeah, and this is, it's a regional study also, yep.
Okay, all right. Regional meaning?
Yep, northern lower peninsula, eastern upper peninsula.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And not all those towns would have water plants, either necessarily.
Right.
That's it. Pretty easy, not much to say.
I'll make a motion to be responsible for our plant and approve the resolution to adopt an ordinance to amend section 42-201 and 42-202 parentheses 3 of chapter 42 of the city code to adjust water rates in the city of Cadillac 3%.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open public comment as it relates to the adjustment of sewer rates. Seeing no one, we'll close, close public comment and move to discussion or entertaining a motion.
Well, I suppose I have one more question. Just, just a yes or, look at him, he's looking at me already.
Ready to respond.
Bring it on, right, Owen? One quick yes or no question, are you saying if we didn't pass this rate hike, yes or no, would we still have a functioning, perfectly good water and sewer system?
Tomorrow, yes.
For, for the rest of the year?
I don't, that, it's impossible to know.
Kind of an answer, but thank you. You have a nice tie tonight too, Owen.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you have nice ties.
Can you go back one slide too? Can you guys go back one slide?
Can I borrow it?
Everything's for sale, Randy.
Thank you. I don't know.
Yeah, I think the idea is like directly to answer your question, we would have, we would be perfectly fine functioning this year, maybe even next year, maybe even the year after. But at a certain point, our, our ability to handle emergencies would, would, would be gone because the fund balance would be decreased.
I'm just talking about a one-year break for the people, you know, amongst...
Well, we took, we took four years' break.
Five years ago.
Yeah, well, there were four years in the last...
And, and we all know here, setting here, in case the people don't realize it, there'll be water and sewer rates every, hikes every year.
Can I finish for just a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there were four years in Owen's slide that we didn't have an increase.
Yep.
And then it caused us to have a much larger increase than an annual 3%.
The 10%.
You know, and we, and we have communities around us that didn't raise their rates, other communities that didn't raise their rates, and they weren't able to take care of their infrastructure. And so we're trying to do both of those things right now.
And I'm just saying for the people, the taxpayers of the city, to give them a break for one year. But, and we all know, setting up here, I'm warning you people, this is going to go on every year. Unless we get more people behind that microphone saying you don't want this, okay? This will function fine for a year, giving the taxpayers a break, not raising rates. I'm the lone voice up here, but that's okay, I don't mind that.
I don't think you're the lone voice. I think this is one of the most difficult parts of our job is being responsible and looking out. I hate raising rates, I absolutely hate it. And I pay the increased rates. Saying that, I would never want to be in the position of, of cities that we know in southern Michigan in relation to their water and sewer that have not maintained and fall into trouble. So I, I agree with you, I'd love to say we don't want to do a, a rate raise. The responsible thing to do is keep it at a low rate so that we're ensuring, it's our insurance policy for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens to make sure we don't have sewage problems and don't have water. So you're not a lone voice, I hate the raise. Saying that, I believe it's our responsibility to keep it as minimal as possible to maintain the safest infrastructure we can have as possible.
I understand that, but I still think the people deserve a year off. Jeff, do you know how many shut offs you had last month, water shut offs, offhand?
Complete shut offs?
Yeah.
Jeff, you got a mic.
Sorry.
I mean, do you have a, do you know the number and average or does it...
I think the number last month was about 20 people out of 4,000 that had their water shut off for non-payment.
That's how many users we have on city water is 4,000?
Oh, we have about 4,000 accounts between 3,500 and 4,000. Depends if you're talking water or sewer.
Yeah.
So, and some people just have garbage. So then they're on their accounts too, so.
Just curious, thank you.
Yep.
I'm done.
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section 42-374 of chapter 42 of the city code to adjust sewer rates in the city Cadillac by 3%.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have one more public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This final public hearing is basically the capstone of the city's budgeting process for fiscal year 2023, which establishes our, our budget and the framework for all of the things that we work on and the operations that we fund. We have already had a presentation for this document at your last council meeting and have been talking about it now, Owen, for about a month and a half, I think, publicly?
April 4th.
Since April 4th. This, this is the necessary public hearing per your charter and there's no further information to present this evening.
Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for any public comment as it relates to the appropriations act for fiscal year 2023. Seeing no one? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussion of the council or entertain a motion.
Can I just quick say that I've been in a lot of, in my time here, the budget process? Each year, and each year I am so amazed at the, the level of expertise that the staff has in this and the mindfulness that goes into this process. Not just from staff, although it's directed by staff, it's led by staff, but to the council as well and how well we all work together to make this work. And so I would just like to commend the, the leadership on this that you do such a great job to make something that is normally not very accessible to me, intellectually very understandable, so thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance establishing general appropriations act for the fiscal year 2023.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Whenever you're ready, Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM and the serving of alcoholic beverages in the pavilion area from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 9th, 2022 for the Cadillac Casting Inc. 100th Year Celebration.
100 years. Are they doing some sort of a concert?
They are, they're planning on it. They're planning on a concert, they're planning on having some food trucks and some form of a, I'm just going to call it a beer garden. But they're looking at inviting a thousand or so of their closest friends and it's all in an open public space, so undoubtedly the community will certainly be, be able to access the site as well.
Wonderful.
100 years is something worth celebrating.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM and the serving of alcoholic beverages in the pavilion area from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 9th, 2022 for the Cadillac Casting 100th Year Celebration.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM on Mondays from June 27th through August 8th, 2022 for the Clam Lake Band Concerts.
Anybody know how long that's been going on?
I just was thinking that. Seventies?
Like forever? I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:30 to 8:30 PM on Mondays from June 27th through August 8th, 2022 for the Clam Lake Band Concerts. And if you haven't gone, please get down there, it's really wonderful.
I'll second that. Somebody seconded it.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from June 6th to 13th, 2022 for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from June 6th to 13th, 2022 for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to some appointments.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Brian Arons to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on May 16th, 2023.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Arons to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on May 16th, 2023.
Also, it's nice that we got such a quality candidate too, I was looking at his application. He's, I mean, he's not new to the area, but he's recently new again to the community, so that's fantastic.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing because the last one that we approved too was a quality candidate and a new volunteer for the city, so that's great.
It says Mr. Bush, I'm assuming the county commissioner?
That, yeah.
That's nice, that's fantastic. Support, or do I need to make a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, he made the motion, so support, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Reagan O'Neill to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on May 19th, 2025.
I'd make a motion to approve, approve the reappointment of Reagan O'Neill to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on May 19th, 2025.
Support.
Should be commented that he's been on the board since 1997. So thanks, Reagan.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The first item under the manager's report is a brand-new request that we have from a local entrepreneur who owns the building currently at 301 North Mitchell Street. As X marks the spot in the public communication, he would like to temporarily store some kayaks and bicycles and paddle boats and paddle boards and basically summer water toys, as well as bikes of course, which is not a water toy, that he plans on renting from his 301 North Mitchell Street facility as a way of basically providing an opportunity for folks on this side of the lake to access the lake that otherwise don't have the ability because they don't have the equipment to do so. In working with staff, we identified this spot as the most conducive. It's the most wide-open area available currently. That is also adjacent to both his business as well as to the public boat launch area. His plan would be to remove the, the rental equipment at night so it's not there overnight and then to set it back in the morning. Also, we thought we would charge, as we go into this pilot year, a $200 rental fee and just sort of see how it all, how it goes. You know, he doesn't know from a business perspective whether or not the logistics of it is going to make the most sense or how successful the business enterprise is going to be. And certainly we also don't know from a city perspective, you know, whether or not it's going to be well-accepted or not in terms of how it's going to work. And looking at the timing of this request as it correlates to city council as well as planning commission, this also needs planning commission ratification. We're bringing it to you guys now and then it'll be to the planning commission at their meeting, presumably in a couple of weeks from now or a week from now, whenever the last, yeah, whenever the last meeting is of the month for them to then presumably ratify the consideration so he could then start doing it yet this spring as it goes into early summer, so.
How many kayaks or bikes is he, is he talking about?
Uh, I'm not certain if, if he's really certain. He was looking at either buying a device that would, that the, the, the units would latch onto or he would fabricate something where he can secure, secure them, you know, so that they can't unintentionally be, you know, you know, walk away, right? In meeting with him, he's looking, you know, at a slow start because this is new. So he doesn't really know what the demand is. We also have, we're very fortunate to have a resort on the other end of the lake, on the west end of town, that is also going to be providing similar rentals and whatnot, all from the private property and through the, through the resort. So, you know, nobody really understands yet the supply and the demand, you know, for this service. And it's sort of similar, I think, in a, in a strange way to the food truck thing. You know, for the first time ever, we now have a permitted food truck in one of the city-directed sites. Took a few years before it caught on, but we are now starting to see that outgrowth. And so I think that this is an inevitability of seeing also this type of service business coming, coming into, into being.
Do we need to do this motion subject to planning?
You could, yes.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to authorize the city manager to approve a one-year permit with Eli Hoffer for the use of the property near the Chestnut Street Boat Launch, subject to planning board approval.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Moving, moving right along, the next item for council consideration this evening are bids regarding the Air Street, Street Improvements. It includes installation also of a new water main. Bids were solicited. Three bids were received, with the recommendation going to the lowest bid received, which is to Crawford Contracting, Inc. out of Mount Pleasant, Michigan. The recommendation this evening is to award them the contract in an amount of $240,529.50. Also, the recommendation this evening is to add the 10% contingency that would bring the project to $264,582.45. Funds are available in our local street water and sewer fund.
Well, I'd make a motion to award the contract for the Air Street Improvements Project to Crawford Contracting, Inc. for the bid amount of $240,529.50, and to approve a 10% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total award amount to $264,582.45.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item, Mayor, and members of the city council, is regarding Simon Street Improvements. In addition to the street itself, this also includes sanitary sewer, water main, and curb and gutter, so the scope of the project is bigger than the one that you just, that you just approved. Again, bids were solicited, and the recommendation is to go with the lowest bidder, which is CJ's Excavating out of Cadillac, Michigan, in an amount of $915,735.48. Additionally, we're looking at a 15% contingency. Again, the scope of this project is a lot larger. That would bring the total to $1,053,095.80, and funds would be coming from our local street fund, water, and sewer funds.
Are these ever bid out?
Yes.
Is this something we bid?
These are the bids.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, three bids are.
Okay, thank you. I would make a motion to award the contract for the Simon Street Improvements Project to CJ's Excavating, Inc. for the bid amount of $915,735.48, and to approve a 15% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total award amount to $1,053,095.80.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
All right. Moving into adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we do have two this evening. The first one is a request to extend the time for a conditionally authorized marijuana business. This is with regard to WL Green Ventures that is looking at putting in a medical marijuana retail facility at, basically, 929 North Mitchell Street. Essentially, the timeframe that they've had to work with is currently run out, and they're looking for a year extension. We would recommend that extension at this time.
Hold on. Are, are these people trying to get, these are the people that spoke here trying to get a recreational license?
It's possible that this was the same company, but it may not have been. So, just for a quick refreshment, the city council authorized four retail licenses, two for adult use for recreational, two for medical. Neither one of the medical operators have started yet. They both indicated that, short of also having a recreational license, that the business model is currently very, very difficult to get their shop open and running. Council has yet to review that, that request. And if I, did I just say that backwards? Maybe I did. So, they have the medical, and short of getting the recreational license.
You said it right.
Okay. So, it makes it, it makes it difficult for them to open up their doors. One of the, one of those companies, WL Green, is still trying to, I think, figure out a way to do it, and they're asking for a year extension to it. If council wishes to pick up that conversation in a formal way, I'm happy to have that on a future agenda in terms of looking at adjusting the licensing to allow for additional recreational licenses for those that already have medical licenses, and perhaps for those that already have recreational licenses, seeing if we would allow them to have medical licenses. But the request tonight is just simply to extend the timeframe for one of your medical licenses that have already been conditionally let out before it expires. It expires at the end of the month, and so we're looking for the extension.
I personally would rather not take up that discussion, and I'm mildly worried that they're trying to get a backdoor into opening up the medical and then grabbing a recreational license. I mean, they've already said, you know, they're not gonna be able to do the medical, which, I mean, that'd be great if they were able to, but I'm still a little hesitant to.
Is that something you can do, Mike, which is really start out medical and?
Sue this?
You'd still have to have our approval.
What, if they sue us, or try to go around us, or try to, I guess that's kind of the worry?
Yeah, I get, why can't he do what he's saying?
Yeah, not unless the law changes.
Okay.
So, right now, the.
I don't want any more than two either.
The city has set its limits, right? So, unless either the city revises that in some way, shape, or form, or the state law changes, then no. I mean, this is an extension. I, I've spoken with these people. They clearly want a recreational license.
Yes.
Clearly. And so I think they're looking at their options, but in the meantime, need an extension for the medical. But extending the medical is not gonna get them any closer to recreational unless the city changes its view, or the state law changes the state law.
So, we had other people that were interested in that medical license, right?
Yes. I can't remember the total, but yes, there were others.
Medical license?
No.
No, recreational.
Recreational.
Yeah, there weren't other medical.
There were no other medical? Okay.
No, we've had, we have had other people that received the medical licenses that actually, after realizing that they're not able to get.
They didn't apply.
Yeah, a rec license, they gracefully, or, you know, courteously diplomatically gave it back to us, said, "Thank you, but no thank you."
We're going through this. I represent Mount Pleasant as well.
I just, I know.
Going through the same thing there. I mean, there is no market any longer, will not be a market any longer.
Didn't they just drop the amount?
They dropped all of their caps.
Right. You can have as many as you want in Mount Pleasant.
As many as the market will bear.
We can't have that here.
I'm gonna vote no on this, so just, just because that makes me mildly uncomfortable, because I know they don't have an intention to use this license unless we change our mind, or the state changes their minds.
So, is it like a placeholder, you think?
It, it could be. It could be. But I think, just to clarify a statement that I made in terms of whether the city wants to have a conversation about licensing changes down the road, I was not suggesting that the city necessarily open up, you know, our doors to new sites, per se, unless, of course, that's a direction the council would like to look at. I was simply suggesting that if council wanted to have a licensing discussion, you could look at the four sites that have already been approved, and, and making it so that they can actually redevelop or accommodate. Two of the four have, two have not. And so that was where I was going with it. But not, not to create more locations in the community, so.
I share your concern, too, Robert, but I think I'd vote yes on this. But I understand where you're coming from. I don't want more than two. That's enough.
My, my only question is, is to apply and be approved for the medical. They paid their non-refundable deposit. If they, if at some time in the future they wanted recreational, that doesn't get them put in, in the sense they still have to reapply.
Okay, so it can't be a placeholder.
Yes, exactly. So, I, I think based on that, I'm comfortable with their request just because of their investment of $5,000 in that license.
Right. Yeah, that's how I feel.
Actually, it's $10,000.
It's $10,000.
They've also, they've also paid their first-year licensing fee upfront.
Okay.
Oh, then.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to extend time for conditionally authorized marijuana business, WL Green Ventures LLC, to complete final authorization.
Support. Councilmember Ingles?
No.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The final item under this section of your agenda is the local government approval resolution for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission regarding the application for a DDA liquor license to GND liquor stores. And city council previously approved this several months ago. However, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission advised that in the form that was submitted, while it listed, it's for the DDA license and listed the MCL appropriately, it didn't also list the Class C license, which is what the actual license is that you're getting through the DDA license, and have requested that the municipality resubmit the resolution form, also having the words "Class C License" on it. That is why this is back in front of you this evening.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution as presented to approve a Class C liquor license for GND.
I'll second.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we do have the minutes from the last Historic District Commission in our packets for our review. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Evening, I guess it is. Terry Harvey, my comment tonight has a lot to do with Marcus. When Marcus first came here, I thought he'd be quite a good individual for Cadillac. Didn't take me too long to figure out the difference. When I read, got today's paper, my, my layman all screwed up the last four years. Thank you, Marcus. And when I got today's paper, I don't, did any of you read the front page, or look at the front page? I think, well, maybe it's page three. It's where they had the paving project for Simon Street. Marcus knows where Simon Street is. Did any of the council have a chance to read it?
You don't interact during public comment.
Okay, that's fine. Back, I'd have to go through my records to find out what year. I came in and talked to Marcus shortly after he first came here, and I thought he seemed like he'd be a pretty decent city manager for us, which wasn't too long after that, probably a year or something, maybe. I no longer felt that way. Marcus could tell you about how my life was destroyed, compared, along with that picture that was on the front page at the Cadillac News today. Do you remember that, Marcus? The brick house with no sewer?
We can't.
You took a, you took a very nice, two-story brick historic home, disconnected the water, you ran new sewer up Nelson Street. I took my deeds, copying my deeds over to the idiot that was running the water department then, lives in Grand Rapids area now, I think. I showed him my, copying my deeds. I showed exactly where my sewer went, where it tied in. And that, I can't use that language in here, probably. That individual told me I never had sewer. I said, "We'd lived in the house for 10 years. It had sewer, and it shows right here in my deeds where it is." He said, "Never had sewer." And I think Marcus knows about that. You weren't here then, I don't believe. You were here when I tried to come in and have something done about it later. I spoke to the fellow that, I guess I spoke to both the mayor and the fellow that used to run the water department. Actually, they had called me, I guess. The one that, not the head of the water and sewer, but his assistant, which I feel is a very decent individual, called me on the phone, and that was just shortly before I lost everything we had, and told me that they could run a new sewer for me now for that brick house. But they'd have to run it down to, run it down Simon Street to East, excuse me, East Pine.
Mr. Harvey, you're over on your time.
Well, excuse me. I'll talk outside to help with you.
Okay, that'll take us to.
One more.
Oh, I apologize.
And life goes on. Just a couple of things off the top of my head. We got a new city budget, I believe, for 2023. Maybe we can start looking forward. The revenue, I didn't see what the capital expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. But now, maybe it's time for the citizens, something for the citizens. Maybe we can get a tax break, or, you know. The revenues are coming in hard and heavy. House prices double, tripling. Tax bases are going up. We, the citizens of Cadillac, could deserve, for, so I was going, going to go on to the Northwood property. If they're gonna redesign that, is that gonna be coming out of the city budget? I know we can't answer that, and so, but, I mean, let's, let's, let's do something for the citizens. And with all the revenue coming in, I believe that we deserve a tax break. And I do want, again, to compliment the city, the Utilities Department. You know, for the last 40 or 50 years, yes, there may have been a few blips into the system, but it's been running very smoothly, you know, through all the different directors over the last 50, 40, 50 years, that, at least that I know of. And I, one last comment was, was when we just passed these last several ordinances on vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, that we couldn't put some Jake breaking in on the semis, because they're purposely doing that, too, you know, but. And that's about it. With the growing population of Cadillac, our wastewater treatment plant, our utility director knows, but I don't know how many millions of gallons a day we are treating now. But I foresee that a new plant or construction, I could be wrong, but someone's gonna have to be, you know, with all the increased population, a new plant or something is gonna be in effect. But again, the industry has a large effect and the cost factor of treating their wastewater at the Cadillac Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, should anyone have anything.
I've talked too much already.
Good, good. We're good? All right. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. I know it's been a long night, so.
Thank you, everybody.